Commissioners to order for this Tuesday, November the 6th. You have not voted, you have one hour left till the polls are closed. Very much. This time I'd like to ask our District Two Commissioner Trey Allen to have our invocation.
You would all please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening asking that you be with us as we go forth through the business for the great citizenry of Columbia County. Thank you for the countless blessings that you have bestowed upon all of us, this great nation, great community that we live in. Remember the words of Robert Kennedy that said that elections not only remind the citizens of their rights but also their responsibilities of living in our great democracy. We ask that you be with everyone and remind all of us that when this is over, this election, and tomorrow when the sun rises, we are all fellow travelers on this world and this journey of life, we are all your children. We will go forth together, try to do what right or sight. We thank you for all these blessings. We say these words in your name, amen.
Please stand for the prayers of allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, my nation, God, physical, for all.
This ball's moving, man. We're flatterin' around the sun.
Once again, we have a whole quorum tonight with all five commissioners present. Looked at the minutes of our previous meeting of October the 16th. We'll take a motion for their approval if you're satisfied with the content.
Go move.
Second?
Any items needing any clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Oh, we're moving that to debate for a minute.
Mr. Johnson, you have any other, any additions to the agenda other than a couple of requests to speak later on?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll proceed with the items on the agenda. Again, want to welcome each of you to this meeting of the Board of Commissioners. These proceedings are videotaped. We'd be happy for you to have a copy if you'd like one, just make a note to our county clerk up here and she'll get one sent to you. Also, that they'll be available on the county website for your viewing after a couple of days. Remind you too that you're invited to speak to this body. If you're not already on the agenda, we do ask that you fill out a speaker form in the back and bring it up to Paul and she'll bring it up and we'll recognize you at the proper time during the meeting. We do have a special recognition tonight, but I'd like to ask the members of the Marshall family if they'd come down front over to the side. I believe we have Ms. Henrietta, Lee, Benzo, Marshall family. For those of you that don't remember because faces have changed so much, Debbie Marshall was born by Columbia County in 1984. He became the Executive Director of the Board of Elections, thousand. He held that position until she retired, thousand twelve, and unfortunately through a medical condition, she passed on shortly thereafter. It's hard to, hard to talk about Debbie. She was such a special person. She could light up a room when she walked into it and see by these pictures with that, that big mouthful of white teeth and that grin. He'd just come in every once in a while and say, "Mr. Cross, I just want to see how you doing today." Didn't matter how I felt, I felt better, she was there. Now, not only was she a great Board of Elections Executive Director, but she was a great person. And it's a shame that, you know, those kind of people sometime get taken away from us. And Lee, I know it's been awful hard for all of you, but tonight we wanted to honor her, her memory, with a plaque that'll go over on the wall there, reminding people that she was here and that we remember she was here and we always remember. Would you like to say a few words?
Give me a great deed, especially to stay. Hey, 'cause I know what type of, what type of employee she was. This day, stood on, walking through the office, bedroom slip. I said, "Nobody can do that but Debbie." Dave her one hundred and ten. Counselor's nights where I would stare, make the phone call, "When are you coming home?" Work hard, she was dedicated to this, everything that she does. Trust me to her. Now, I need a more than one arm, but I know she's looking down from heaven. I'll leave, I can say, "Oh, well done." Thank you.
Debbie was one of the times I get choked up, they were wrong. Great, great lady. But, right, could always tell me. Right, I said, "No, you're not all right going home." I, I got the job done. I got the job done. Billy loved at her job. Always say funny things about you. I'm going, just say, "I'm going in there, I'm gonna knock Ron inside his head in there." And I just want to let, Billy really appreciate, thinking enough for her.
This, this Debbie had a little fire about her too on occasion. I remember a particular election, very important, it was for a congressional seat, and the former Chair of Columbia County was, was running, Jim Whitehead. And at the end of the voting, it wasn't turning out exactly like we had hoped it would. And the campaign manager, Mr. Whitehead, even made the comment that, "Well, there's still 500 votes in Columbia County that hadn't been counted." And that was on the radio early the next day. Well, my phone started ringing about 5:30 or 6 o'clock and Ms. Debbie was on the phone. She said, "Mr. Cross, you tell them people they ain't ever gonna be overnight 500 votes not counted in Columbia County. I can tell you that. So you get them on the phone and set them straight." "Yes, ma'am, I'll do that." And I did, I called the campaign manager, "Buddy, I'm sorry, but every single vote cast in Columbia County has been counted and accounted for, so it's over." She could, she could get it done when she needed to. Lee, have me raise this up here and let's show what, just this top one. This is where we recognize the Employee of the Month. You can see those, it's on the list and all these to be done, but up at the top, "In memory of Deborah B. Marshall, Executive Director, Board of Elections, 1984 to 2013, Columbia County Employee of the Month" plaque. So, this will be on the wall over there for everyone to see and I wonder if we could get a picture with the family here in, in front of this. If we can ever do anything for you, ever do anything for you here at the county, you can call me and after the first of the year I won't be here, but call Mr. Johnson, call Mr. Duncan, who'll be the new chair, anybody else. Thank you all. Now, I believe we recognize a county employee to be added to the plaque, our October 2018 Employee of the Month, Jerry Baldwin from Fire Marshal's Office. Commissioner Allen will make this presentation. Eric, come on down front. Anyone else that would like to?
Eric, I don't think we so much follow that as we do just moving down the list. Bring any barbecue with you? All right. Those of you who don't know, Mr. Baldwin is one of the fine cooks in our fire department. He specializes in barbecue. This is plaques presented to you, sir. It's an honor for me to extend your congratulations for being the Employee of the Month for October Goes on to tell you, you know, you're gonna get like a hundred dollar check that has taxes deducted, pay off and stuff like that, but looking for some anecdotes from some of your fellow firefighters, but unfortunately, they wouldn't tell me. And I'm hoping that they may share some with you, but Jerry's a native of Franklin, North Carolina, graduating from high school in Iowa City College in 1981. Got three children, served in Columbia County for 20 years, and the last four as the Deputy Fire Marshal. His spare time, he enjoys farming and outdoors. What do you grow? That one alone. But congratulations, sir. Thank you very much for all your work. Say some thanks.
My name is Brian Clark, I'm his direct supervisor, I have to say. Body that works with him, probably, a lot of respect for him before we started working Probably can tell that Jerry, this is not his scene right here, in front of you all being recognized. But Jerry comes in every day, you know, and he, he truly brings the group together, you know, even though he works for the Fire Marshal's Department, you know, we have all the building inspectors as well as the Fire Marshals in our group, you know, and Jerry, when Scott in the commission adopted the, the whole pride aspect, so, really exempt, just show that every day. You come in with the professionalism, the respect, bring our group together and I greatly appreciate that. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. Five years ago when we hired you, yes, we came over here. Highly appreciate it. Quite a number of years.
Now, under our presentation, so we'll hear from Robert Boyd to speak to a item that'll be taken up later on, the meeting, a zoning matter. Welcome, Mr. Boyd.
Thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. My name is Robert Boyd and I live at 2005 Turner Drive in Evans, Georgia. I live in the Jessica Creek Community, which is a 48 patio home neighborhood. I'm the President of the Jessica Creek Property Owners Association. I'm here to voice the concerns and the recommendations of the proposed Phase One development by Maybaum Development Company. The plan is to build a three-story storage facility along with three restaurants on a five-acre tract of land that faces Washington Road and backs up to the Jessica Creek Community and the Madison Heights Nursing Facility. Our homes are built on approximately one-third acre lot, so the yards are small. The storage facility and restaurants will be built with only 10 feet of buffer between the backyards and the new buildings. Storage facility and restaurants would cause noise with early morning garbage pickup, more traffic, service trucks unloading supplies late at night or early in the morning hours. Storage renters can come and go 24 hours, seven days a week. There would be lights on the parking lot that would possibly shine into the backyards of many of our neighbors. My neighbors and I don't want a three-story storage facility or restaurant in our backyards. Our property values have been increasing over the last few years, but I feel our property values will decrease with these proposed facilities in our backyards. I don't think any of you would want a storage facility and a restaurant in your backyard. I've done some research and there are three storage facilities within a mile and a half of our neighborhood. There is one a mile away on Washington Road. There is one on Blanchard Road that's about a mile and a quarter away from our neighborhood. And there is a third storage facility behind Ace Hardware, only one and a half miles away. There is also a large sign on the empty lot next to Cushman's Paint and Body announcing a storage facility coming soon. I questioned the managers with the existing storage facilities concerning their vacancies. They were all about 60% occupied. Phase Two of the Maybaum Development Plan is on a 50-plus acre tract across Washington Road adjacent to the Public Shopping Complex. This proposed development will be similar to the Public's marketplace with restaurants, shops, and other businesses. None of the businesses in the Public's marketplace or the new development on the adjacent 50-plus acre tract will impact any of the homes in Riverwood. This makes good sense for everyone involved. Our recommendation is that all the restaurants, shops, and storage facility, if it's even needed, be built on this 50-plus acre tract on Washington Road, which will benefit residents and shop owners without impacting any homeowners and families in Riverwood, Jessica Creek, or Windmill. We realize that property on Washington Road is valuable and will be developed. We recommend that the five-acre tract, which joins Jessica Creek and Madison Heights Nursing Facility, be developed with less intrusive businesses such as doctors' offices, dental offices, therapy and rehab facilities, imaging, and counseling services. All of these businesses would be very beneficial and less intrusive to everyone. I am a retired educator in Columbia County. I taught Georgia history and government for over 35 years. I taught my students to be involved in their community, their county, and state government. I encouraged them to pay attention to government and campaigns during election years. I have also kept educated to local government and campaigns. I have found a common thread in all of your campaigns during the various years that you ran for office, and that common thread was all of you promised to be responsible planners in the development and growth of Columbia County, and I really appreciate that. The people of Columbia County have trusted you to consider all options as you develop our county. I'm calling on all five of you commissioners tonight, let's press the pause button on this development project and take a few days to reconsider the options we have recommended. Please don't make a decision tonight that is permanent and a negative impact on our community. Please put a brief hold on this project. We invite you to come and visit Jessica Creek and see for yourself the beauty and tranquility that we hope you will help us preserve. The developers and business owners can have their markets and restaurants across Washington Road, and the homeowners can have beneficial businesses that are less intrusive to our neighborhood. Please use the common sense approach. This is a win-win for everyone. Thank you for your service to Columbia County and thank you for your consideration in this matter before us tonight.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Boyd. This concerns a different zoning, something on South Bel Air Road.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yes, I'm Bob Willis. I live at 731 and 741 Royal Springs Lane. I'm allowing, asking that documents be brought forward that would help you just what it is I'm talking about. According to page 27 of Vision 2035, one goal should be to utilize the conservation-style subdivisions in order to transition from existing rural subdivisions like Royal Springs to traditional subdivisions like Birchfield. This would mean five-acre tracts in a proposed Jackson Heights project. However, given the fact that there's an existing pond and state-protected wetlands, this would afford only about 50 acres to the developer, about 10 building lots, this would not be very profitable for a developer. We certainly prefer the residential development being proposed over the light industrial, so we do not impose, oppose the zoning. However, we had hoped that it would be a lower density of 50 to 80 homes. The proposed development is compliant in every other way but Vision 2035, and we appreciate the fact that the developer has respected that plan in about 80% of the cases. Three traffic engineer, I'm gonna make four requests of the panel, of the board tonight. Three traffic engineering conditions are being levied upon the developer, one of which is to contribute to the left-hand turn lane on South Old Bel Air Road where it intersects with Old Bel Air Lane. Old Bel Air Lane is a loop which forms an intersection in the direction of Brookwood Elementary and in the direction of Columbia Road. The intersection nearest Columbia Road recently experienced a fatal traffic accident where a car left the highway and crashed into a home, killing the driver. The homeowner narrowly escaped with her life. Both intersections of South Bel Air Road, Old Bel Air Lane must have dedicated left-turn lanes added for safety and to avoid the backup of traffic like that at Lewiston Road. The county is well aware of both intersections are dangerous, and it can be easily foreseen that traffic can be backed up to Brookwood Elementary by cars waiting behind people trying to turn left into this new development. Many future residents may be working at Fort Cordeau that will get off work at the same time and create the traffic jam that presently exists at I-20 at Bel Air Road. The developer has pledged $240,000 for road improvements, and at $180,000 each, two left-hand lanes would exceed the developer's budget. Therefore, we are asking the county to guarantee the difference or ask the developer for more contribution. I write in bold print there, the request, two left-hand turn lanes on South Old Bel Air Road, but each location, there should be a left-hand turn to allow other traffic to pass and for people to be able to pause long enough to clear oncoming traffic, presently you have to dash across the road. I refer you to your, page 71 of the document that you posted online, the county's criteria for evaluation number four. Dates of the development will not be excessive or burdensome on existing streets. This is not accurate if you've been to the location. In addition to the intersection problems noted, Old Bel Air Lane is a road so narrow two trucks can only pass in opposite directions if one yields to pull nearly off the road and retracts its mirrors. 160 homes will yield 160 cars, with many residents having two cars per household. If half of those households have two cars, that's 240 additional cars on this narrow road. Nothing in the developer's plan and nothing in the county's response to that plan addresses this dire situation. This road is only a half a mile long from end to end. It must be widened to accommodate this additional volume of traffic. We're warning that this is a hazard to public safety, and it can be foreseen and should be avoided by the county pledging to widen this road, and we would think it entirely appropriate that the developer contribute to this as they are the proximate cause of this additional traffic. Thus, the request is to widen Old Bel Air Lane its entire half-mile length. We sincerely appreciate the developer designing a 50-foot buffer between Royal Springs and Jackson Heights. As the county's document indicated, existing trees and vegetation should be incorporated as part of the buffer where possible. We respectfully request all existing trees and vegetation be left as part of the buffer. It will actually save the developer money not having to remove trees. It will not adversely impact construction, and it will tend to present a more natural buffer, so we propose to leave the front portion of the buffer untouched. Finally, my last request. The buffer as designed consists of a series of six-foot berms. The artist drawing that I think you have in front of you, Figure Seven Buffer Plan, shows two berms up near the entrance of Jackson Heights. Berms in that area would not buffer anyone. No one lives opposite that location. The little sketch I passed around, you can see there are two residents up that way that come in from Old Bel Air Road. They don't come in from our, our private, there's actually no residences there. The berms appear to discontinue in front of Mr. Golabachi's property, leaving Moosebaum, Willis, and Jordan without any buffering berms. We respectfully request the board require the developer to construct buffering berms the length of Royal Springs, approximately .4 miles. This berm would shield most of the development fencing from view. We encourage the incorporation of Leyland cypress or other fast-growing buffering trees to hide the hundreds of rooftops that will replace our pasture land, which is our current view. If the board believes a berm of 4.4 miles would be an unfair burden on the developer, then a berm of half that distance, .2, beginning at the Jordan property and running back toward Old Bel Air Lane, would shield all four current residents. From the sketch, this appears only slightly longer than the berm proposed by the developer. It just begins at the end of Royal Springs Lane rather than the beginning. In light of the fact that the conservation-style subdivision is not being constructed as a buffer as provision 2035, this is, this is, this more complete buffer is a reasonable accommodation request by existing residents. I summarize that with require the developer to at least locate the berms such that they shield the existing, rather where they have them indicated now in a sketch where they would shield no residents. I'll conclude by saying, as the previous speaker did, we'd actually recommend that you not vote permanently on it until you discover what the true cost is to the county. I know that the zoning provision is contingent and the closing is contingent upon the road approval plan. What I'm suggesting is, if you agree with us that two left-hand lanes need to be made and that road needs to be widened, the developer would need to know what their share of that is before they would want to close on that property, and you would want to know what the county share is before you'd agree for it to be owned in that fashion. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Mr. Keith Lawrence and Mike Palladi. These are speaking in favor of that same project as being of the developers?
Right. I'm Mike Palladi. I live at 738 Greenfield Abbey Court, Martinis, Georgia, 30907. I wanted to respond on the Riverwood storage request first. This parcel was originally zoned back in 2002, and it was a PUD that was done by the developer of Jessica Creek, and so that there would be residential on a portion of the PUD, and then there would be commercial on the front parcel of the property that faced Washington Road, and it's currently within the PUD, Zone C1, you know, for commercial. Now, anytime Maybaum develops, we're very cognizant of being, when we have a commercial use adjacent to a residential use, that's always a hot topic. So, the first thing we did on this, you know, we went to... So, the first thing we did on this, you know, we went to Mr. Boyd. I met with Mr. Boyd. I talked to him, you know, told him what we were going to do. And then I held an informational meeting for anybody who wanted to come from both Riverwood Plantation and Jessica Creek, and we spent probably an hour and a half, two hours, addressing any concerns. Some of the things that were mentioned, like the buffer on the back, as a part of working with the Planning Commission, it was increased from 10 foot to 20 feet to actually incorporate more buffer on the backside of the property adjacent to Jessica Creek. We had agreed that we would work with Georgia Power on a lighting plan to diffuse, to use shields and diffuse the lighting to move it to the front. And we thought the impact actually from a visual standpoint was going to be pretty good because the cut that's going to be required because of the topo there is about 20 foot on the, most of that and near the front where Jessica Creek is. But while the three stories of the storage unit sounds really high, referencing it from the backside and looking at Jessica Creek, there is only about a story that would be visible. And we thought that the landscaping plan that we put in place would do a good job of buffering that off as it filled in. You know, he mentioned the fact that there are other storage facilities, and I would say there are other storage facilities, but they are not climate-controlled. There's a huge difference between what we're proposing to build and what was referenced, you know, around the county, and I think that's one of the problems with self-storage. When you mention that word, the first thing that comes to mind is something that a lot of times is unattractive, not well-done, it's not climate-controlled. What we were proposing was doing something that matched the look that we created in Riverwood Plantation by using the same type of brick, white mortar, using an architectural theme with plantation shutters so that it would blend in seamlessly. And I also think that when you look at the fact it's already zoned for C1 zoning the whole length of Washington Road, that the alternate uses that'll go there, if we don't develop it, somebody eventually will develop it. It will be C1, it most likely, with y'all's approval, would be C1, but it's probably going to have a lot more traffic on it in a typical C1 zoning than it is with a self-storage facility because the traffic load is very light on something like this. There's not many people coming and going per day. And, you know, I understand the concern, but I just would look at, I mean, my thought is just we were trying to do something that would work, that would be nice, would blend in with the community, and would fit, and we thought we had taken in the concerns. And, you know, even, you know, looking back at the PUD, I still think that other than the fact we're asking for an exception, it fits and can be done very well. So, that's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Boyd mentioned service trucks all day.
Well, they brought, he brought up service trucks with the restaurants, and we, you know, we agreed, one of the residents came to us about, you know, the restaurants, and they thought, well, where will the garbage dumpsters be? We agreed that we could move those to the bottom of the hill and get, the property actually extends beyond, you know, the back lot in Jessica Creek. And we thought we could move all those down to the bottom of the hill to get them away. And, you know, we had situated, of course, the whole storage facility and the restaurants up on the front of the road so that even the office for the storage facility where people would come wouldn't be on the front. I mean, it'd be behind it in the back, and that would all sit away from the back property line such that, you know, it'd be very little going on back there. So, you know, and then where we put the restaurants and where we put the standalone restaurant site was at the bottom of the hill to get it farther away from the residential development. But we thought it was a good combination and a way to compromise on what you would typically see in something like that where the whole, you know, the whole thing would be a parking lot, and you would have, you know, a lot of traffic coming and going. You know, we thought by putting the storage at that end and moving the other to the other end, we'd minimize that, you know, with the residents on that end. So, that was why we positioned it like we did. But we were, we were working with the planning department to try to minimize any effect that, that, that the restaurants, you know, would make. And actually, that is the one thing that, you know, when we recently developed the adjacent strip out at Riverwood, that was the number-one thing that everybody wanted was restaurants in the area. And we put as many grease traps actually as we could get on the site, and we got as many, now they filled up every restaurant. Two of them were the two best new restaurants, you know, in the area. We did Cafe and Flying Biscuit.
Hey, we about, we about to call time on Jessica.
Yeah, so anyway, that's all I had to say. I just wanted to respond to those things.
And I ask one quick question, Mr. Chairman. The Planning Commission put a condition on there at 8:00 AM for deliveries and dumps.
They did on the restaurants, and they didn't want the dumpsters, you know, they, they put a restriction on deliveries and also when the dumpsters could be dumped so that it didn't bring, you know, traffic in there very early in the morning.
Okay. How about it says 24-hour access to the storage building? Is there a way to limit that, or I don't know a thing about?
You know, typically, they're set up for 24-hour storage, but I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to look at, you know, some other examples of the Climate Service to tell you how realistic it is that you would have a lot of stuff coming. I would anticipate that most of the people coming and going from that were going to be in during daytime hours.
Thank you. You have something to add, Mr. Lawrence?
Just about the Jackson Track, Jackson Heights. Couple things about that buffer that was in there. The location, the berms is where the vegetation was the thinnest. We're not going to take any trees down that property line. What we did was we supplemented the buffer with the additional berms so that we could lift up those areas that had the least amount of existing vegetation. So, just so you get, and that was kind of a thought process. It wasn't necessarily where the houses were, but rather where the gaps in the, in the buffering was, because that's a big requirement with the planning department, was make sure you get a consistent buffer on the front of that. So, that was what that one was on that side. And traffic, I know has been a big issue. We met with Steve Castle, I think, we mentioned this before, a week after putting it under contract, sat down with Steve, and we felt like, you know, coming up with a $240,000 contribution was a really step forward for what, you know, our industry on this side to really, instead of just getting by with the bare minimum, you know, we want to make a substantial contribution that, you know, like we talked about, it can be used for whatever the county feels that needs to be used for on those roadway improvements. So, we think it's a, you know, substantial, and had, obviously, had the Birchfield developer done the same thing, we would be probably talking about a different, different situation on that side. So, just in case you may as well.
So, you are at 240 now?
Yes, we've always been 240.
Did you bring, did you bring the crystal ball?
I didn't have my cane. I, we're looking at the improvements at 240. If you look at what we did out there at, on Evans Alloks, that was about 180 was most at that cost, but we're looking at doing.
Were you widening it and putting?
Yeah, and, and there's some, there's the ability to do it. I mean, we don't have to go with the full left-turn lane. I mean, there's some existing issue out there right now. We understand that. Maybe straighten out that curve, add a little pocket in there for the left turners to get in and out. And then also, on the other, on the other section he was talking about, I've seen some stuff where we could do some signage, maybe some additional striping out there and as well some safety lighting. On Monday, I've got the crews going out there and cleaning up some, the trees around the curves. Some of that vegetation has grown out and made side, side distance an issue. So, we are, we've got a pretty good focus on that area, and then as we look into the next tier, I want to do this as a project to, to do a left-turn lane all up and down Old Bel Air Road, or is it South Old Bel Air, whatever this, this one is. But because issue kind of exists over there, but it's really exacerbated with the curve. But, but now, Mr. Lawrence and Bob's been good about working with this. We do know we have a problem. We do think that the county will, will look at what funding we can and, and contribute, but I think we can get a lot of improvements with what that 240 will do for us.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Robert Neal, presentation on a separate item.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the opportunity to address you. My name is Robert Neal. I'm the trustee of a property that has a historical site, Basil Neal Cemetery. In 1956, this was recognized by the state as a historical site. There's our historical marker. The marker directs people down Happy Valley Lane to visit the site. One of the reasons it does that is because sometime prior to 1990, it was a county road. It was a county road, 28. Verify that at the, the Flatworks by Nextdoor. So, what I'm, I know that the county, the commissioners have rightly considered the cemetery donation, and the concern, again rightly so, by the administrative staff and by the commissioners is the cost of that. And it's estimated that $180,000, I believe, is what a number I heard to pave that road. Now, the road is about a half a mile, and my understanding is that paving it is a pre, self-imposed requirement, about something that you're mandated by law to do, pave the county dirt roads, because there's a number of them that haven't been paved yet. And that would not be a mandate, I don't believe, from my standpoint, for you to pave it. Main thing, the main interest there is to provide access to the public, to the cemetery. Now, I'm not trying to play attorney. We have an attorney here, and he can, he can do that, but not play attorney, but be an attorney.
He's real good playing.
Yes, yes, that's, most attorneys are, yes. But, but I do know that, you know, that the current law on abandoning a roadway requires the county to determine that there's no public purpose, no public benefit of the road any longer. And it also says that it is in the public, or that it is in the public interest to abandon the road. I don't think either one of those conditions existed late 90s, early 90s, when as a large-scale project, the county went through, at least in Winfield area, in the, in Columbia County and that rural area, and went through street by street, and some they made private, some they made, they kept, they made public. And probably the determination was based on population on the road. There was one resident on the, on that road at the time. It's usually large, it was large tracts at the time, and there was one, one acre plot at the top that that was the only resident. But I think in the project of looking at all these roads to make private or public, the county personnel at that time may have understandably overlooked the fact that this was a state historic site. And eminent domain recognizes, part of the power of eminent domain recognizes, one of the purposes is to maintain historical sites. And you have the authority, and they maintain it for, and the eminent domain gives you that under the, the idea of public purpose. So, I guess my petition today is that it's been a site for 56 years, or excuse me, yeah, 56 years, I believe, or 62 years, state historic site, and that the county essentially abandoned the only access road to a historic site in 1990 or thereabouts. And for some reason, in 2001, the county initiated signing of easements on the behalf of the county to maintain the road. I'm not sure, I wasn't involved at that time, and I don't know why the county did that. I'm sure they had a good reason. But nevertheless, the road has not been maintained. If it is not maintained, the sites on that street, there's nine buildable lots now, buildable sites, four are occupied, and the state historic site will have no access to it. Now, you could say, well, people can just park their car at the road and walk down there. Most people that want to go and look, visit a historic site, a Revolutionary War soldiers' burial ground, that is a state historic site, they probably aren't in health or condition to walk a half a mile down a hill and up a hill through briars and brambles. That's what they will be faced with. So, I guess my petition and my request of the county, and you're doing your job to consider the cost, and I understand that and I appreciate that as a citizen. However, the cost is fairly nominal compared to county's overall budget. But more importantly, I think that it will right the situation that the county walked away from and abandoned county road that was the only access to a state historic site. And I'm asking you today to consider that and to correct that. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Marlena, Marjorie Ron.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Hello, Ms. Marjorie Ron.
What a beautiful night to elect a new governor, and I just thought it would be appropriate for me to spend time with my favorite elected local officials and county staff. Always nice to see all of you.
Oh, joy.
Oh, joy. So, anyway, I wanted to come here, 2545 Willow Creek Court, Evans, Georgia. I really appreciated everything Robert Boyd had to say about the parcel of land off of Washington. It's about three or four acres, I believe, five acres. And what I want to say as a board member of the Wheel Movement Organization of the CSRA that tries to encourage pedestrian and biking activity, and as a president of the Friends of the Yuchi Creek Greenway, which we are hoping to have a bidding process and something done at some point, is that this is a beautiful area, and this is not just about a storage facility, but a vision of Columbia County. According to the Vision 2035, I know a lot of people see that parcel of land as an activity center, and maybe you already see it that way, but when I drive around that corner, I don't live in Jessica Creek, but that's one of my ways home, and it's beautiful. And I don't see a storage facility. I see beauty, and it gives a place for my eyes to rest and a place for me to feel grateful and humble in this beautiful place. I really liked your invocation, by the way, in the beginning. And I'd like to invoke the words of JFK and say, "Ask not what your county can do for you, but what you can do for your county." And I don't think you're asking enough of us as far as an environmental awareness. I want to make one thing clear. This is not progress by the standards of 2018. I don't care if it's climate-controlled. I don't care what the facade looks like. I want to know, are there rooftop gardens? Have you left enough habitat intact that's interconnected? You cannot gerrymander wildlife like a voting district, and we have beautiful wildlife here. I feel like some of these developments are like somebody going shopping before checking what's in their pantry. The history that's in the ground, just the, the nature of the flora and fauna, and someone's coming home with all this cheap crap and dumping it on a place that is enriching and beautiful. I also don't see my family piling in the car and, "Hey, it's Friday night. Let's go to the storage facility." If it's an activity center, then let's make it something special, something with outdoor music, something that is not a duplicate of Bel Air and Washington or Lewiston. We don't need more of the same closer to us. Otherwise, we would have all moved in the back lot of a Walmart. But we moved here, and I feel like a broken record. I'm trying to think of new ways to say things without opening a vein, but it, we're, we're two years into just asking for a greenway, and I'm, I'm watching trees being cut down left and right. I don't even know where I am sometimes. And I moved here for the trees. I want a bike path for the trees. I hope you understand that maybe these things take time, and we want to get these plans right, but I wish the bike path thoughtfulness applied to every project. You want to get it right. You measure twice. You cut once. I really appreciated everything Robert Boyd had to say. I don't live in Jessica Creek, but that's part of my way home. I did a little informal poll, took a lot less time and was a lot less expensive than this gathering of beautiful charts and information that we already weighed in on. But of the residents in my network on the Nextdoor app, of those asked, 146 people weighed in, I asked them if they thought that we should go ahead and move forward building this multi-use retail center. I mentioned rare books, I mentioned an olive garden, and I mentioned the stores facility. Of those 146 people, 92% said no. Can you imagine this room if 134 people showed up tonight to say that? Now, we elected you to represent us, and I hope you will take that in consideration that the easiest thing in the world is for someone to click a button, and all those people took the time to say no, and 12 people said yes. So, maybe it's more about timing. My recommendation would be, please focus on developing places that are already clear-cut. Please retain the wild nature of the places that are still wooded, because the more people we add to this neighborhood, the more people are going to needs those wooded areas for many reasons. But as a source of pride, I don't want the land to be pimped out for things that are not going to add spirit and value to that corner, to our lives, to our families. Thank you so much. I'm going to leave this for you, and these are other comments that other people made. You know how I feel, but I'm one person. But I'd say 134 people out of 146 will also say no, in addition to that entire community who know they will never be able to go home again. I just want you to know that the time is now, and we either are thoughtful about it or we all live with regret, and I can't live with that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a letter from a citizen that Mr. Morris would like to acknowledge and read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, dear Bill, this letter is for the purpose of congratulating the engineering and grounds department for their outstanding work in two specific areas. First, at the roundabout, Pumpkin Center, they have changed what was a mess into a nicely groomed and attractive garden spot. Secondly, they have done a great job with layout and landscaping at the new park in Appling. Both of these projects have enhanced the beauty of the area and changed Columbia County for the better. Please recognize them publicly for their outstanding work. Pass along my personal thanks and congratulations. That's written by Phil Turner, who is a resident of Orland, Georgia. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Then we'll move now to our consent agenda. These are items that's been through the proper committee and received the necessary three votes to be put on consent. You're satisfied with this list? We'll approve all of these items as one vote. No move. Any item needing any clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Moving now to Commissioner Allen.
Yes, sir. Regarding item I one A one, I would like to recommend that this be that for information. Moving on to item I one A two, the bids for the Uche Creek Greenway, phase one. I'd like to make a motion to reject the bids for the Uche Creek Greenway, phase one.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Larker, I believe this is a case was over the budget. We found some ways to get it within the budget, but it changed the entire process and not fair to negotiate with one. It's submitted.
Yes, sir, we, to get in budget, we had to cut about a mile of the trail off. We had to change the material, we had to change the construction method. It was quite a bit of changing. We feel that it would be better serving the citizens if we opened it back out to bid with the new design criteria. We feel that we can still get those numbers where we need them to be, maybe get a little more trail out of it if we open it back up to bid. But staff has recommended we reject all bids.
When must go back out?
Uh, January. We, we'll actually get it out in December, but the holidays kind of mess with the bidders. We don't get a whole lot of participation in December. We'd like to put it out the first of the year so we can get the contractors back from the holidays.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. Under new business, I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning request from M one and R one to PRD for tax map zero six eight, year zero six D and zero zero six E, subject to the conditions enumerated in the October fourth, two thousand and eighteen planning commission report.
Motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion of this item?
Did we ever, talking about the turn lanes, so there's enough money to do the two turn lanes, correct?
We'll make efficient use of the money.
How about?
With the final number for the MOU. A lot of money, that's enough money.
How about the berms? I know Bob talked about moving them down a little bit.
And I think they addressed that, and, and I'm a little, I guess, can I have a little, little more clarification on exactly how that's, that's working? I know you did say something, but.
Berms were the gaps in the vegetation.
Right, right, right. They're not for the housing, I get that.
That's right. We can, we can work, we'd be happy to work with, we work with Jonathan on the, on the, y'all's landscape architect, and Andrew, and Will, and everybody else. I mean, we're happy to work at that. It's kind of needs to be worked in the field and location. Where he's talking about sliding it down is actually where there's more existing trees, and you got to stay so far off an existing tree and strip line, otherwise you're going to end up killing it. So, the idea behind it is we definitely want to get, get a good buffer in there. And like I said, you know, we're going to have the fence on our side, so they'll have full use of the whole fifty foot of landscape, which is a little different sometimes than what they do. So, I mean, we'll be happy to adjust it, but if you do it down in some of those locations, you'll have to take trees out in order to build it.
As a, as a PRD, Andrew, do they come back before you for, for the designs and the architectural?
Full set of plan.
You'll be working hand in hand as they move forward through the process.
Go out in the field, probably the best way.
Now, this property currently is owned M one.
Yes, sir.
I have to commend you, I think, for what you've done with the green space and all, because I think certainly this is a much better application than, than any M one that would go in there.
It's actually, you know, he mentioned the conservation community, which is fifty percent open space. That's another way, and this one is like forty-four, forty-two percent open space on this one. So, it actually comes close to a true conservation community, which by y'all's definition in two thousand and thirty-five is fifty percent.
And did I hear someone say that considering improving the entire road, maybe in a future Tisploster?
Yeah.
So that would help this situation, I'm sure.
Prime candidate for. Turn lanes.
Great.
I do believe we, as a development community, I think if we just, that's why we propose what we did, is if we continue to get everybody to kind of look a little bit beyond what they have, I think we can make some inroads on some solutions to some existing problems.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate the, the flexibility the developer is talking about now. I have the other owner here, Mr. Dr. Raphael Jordan is here. Walked in, he's OBGYN, he's on call for babies all the time, so we couldn't count on him being here. But together, we own Royal Springs Line, right down the middle. So, what we would simply ask for is an opportunity to meet with the architectural approvers and the developers in some of the locations of these buffers. We do think that there are some gaps in foliage down further toward our homes. In particular, Mr. Jordan's, Dr. Jordan's home is the only one that actually abuts this property. He's down at this little dead end that you see here, the cul-de-sac. That's his property right over there. So, he's the only one with a residence within spitting distance of the line. So, we would just have, would ask that we look at that, and if in fact there's a gap in vegetation that wouldn't affect existing trees or that could be added, that we'd consider adding some, some additional buffers.
Andrew?
As an onsite thing, we're happy to meet with you onsite and look it over and see what makes sense. Perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you, Bob. Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir. In regards to item I two A two, I'd like to make a motion to approve the major PUD revision for proposed mixed-use retail, commercial and self-storage for tax map zero six six zero zero eight B, subject to conditions enumerated in the October fourth, two thousand and eighteen planning commission report.
Second. Motion on a second. Any further discussion of this item?
Mr. Chairman, this has already been stated, but it being C one, already approved commercial, it's, it's a matter of time before that property develops. And having a chance for the people that develop Riverwood to participate in this, I think is the best product that we could probably ask for those participants.
I concur.
Also, there are constitutional rights, people have to develop their property. So, it's, a lot of times it's not as clear. Great if we could all have nothing, everybody has a five acre lot home and, and room to roam, but a lot of cases, that's just not, not going to happen, it's not realistic. So, try to make the best decisions we can.
Other comments? All in favor? All opposed? I'm sorry, it's a little bit late. Were you in favor? Are you in the middle?
Oh, you were.
I don't know if I'm in favor or not, but I'll raise my hand.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
Four and a half on that one.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to award the Public Safety Driving Course Phase Two, bid number two zero one eight oh two nine, bid thirty-three thirteen to Beams Contracting Incorporated in the amount of three million, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and thirty cents, and one.
I think that's the code, isn't it?
That's the code. Code one seven six one oh point three seven point oh one five.
Any comments on this one? This is another step in getting the sheriff what he wants, is a training facility?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Mr. Allen, before we go to this next item, I've had some information sent that we do not have to allow a oral presentation, that we do have the right to rule on this according to the written summation that was sent. Want to keep that in, in mind, so there's no conflict there by a person not being able to attend because of, I guess you could say, a previous obligation.
Yes, sir.
He's in jail, actually.
Previous obligation being incarceration, yes, sir.
You had to throw that out there, didn't you?
I was just going to let it ride.
These people won't know what the heck's wrong with him.
To, to quote one of our staffers, just because you have the right to represent yourself doesn't mean you have the ability. I would like to make a motion to deny the appeal and to accept the Construction Advisory Board's recommendation to demand the correction of any deficient work and to forfeit Great White Pool's bond such, should such corrective work not be performed within fourteen days, that has authorized proceed with any required paperwork.
Second.
I don't think that's going to happen.
Any further discussion? This is one of a series of problems we've had with pool contractors. All in favor?
Got them, someone back there with their hand up.
Well, the polls are closed. Anybody that's in the building, I guess, can still go ahead and vote, but that's, door's shut. All right. I'm sorry. Here, come on.
But, Aaron, if we're not going to have oral arguments, it shouldn't.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't know that you were available to speak. Okay, I guess, I apologize, I guess I got some wrong information.
The other party, this is the other party.
Oh, the other party.
Well, we, we shouldn't hear the aggrieved party.
Okay, I'm sorry. If we don't hear one side, we can't hear the other.
Can he speak under public comments at the end of the meeting?
Well, you've already voted, so if you just want to take it for confirmation.
Well, come on, we'll do that justice information. Decision's been made, so.
All right, well, I guess I'll keep it short. Uh, I'd like to thank the commission for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm called upon, I live at two nineteen Eden Bridge Way. Last time we come here, first of all, I'd like to apologize to the board. I did get a little heated, you know, it kind of let my temper get away when dealing with somebody, as long as I've dealt with Mr. Chastiger, things like that happen. To give you a little background about me, because my name doesn't tell you much, I'm a retired Army Sergeant Major, spent twenty-six years Army and Army National Guard. I failed a top secret security clearance for over fifteen of those years. Don't maintain a top secret security clearance. Maintained a security clearance of Plant Vogel, Department of Energy. Attained the rank of Sergeant Major, which is less than one percent of enlisted soldiers' zoo. That's the highest ranking United States military for the enlisted side. Not an easy accomplishment. You don't do this by becoming somebody who has questionable integrity, questionable methods, questionable means, questionable lifestyle. You know, I obtained that through hard work, dedication, honesty, integrity, and live in the Army values. I've tried to live those in my life, the military and also as a Christian. So, coming before you, this touches a little raw nerve with me, dealing with Mr. Chastiger. It's going to come down to he said, she said. I mean, I appreciate the board's opportunity to, and, and voting in my favor on this, so I'm not going to go through the countless lies that, you know, I have proof that I can contradict everything he said. The fact is, ten weeks, three days ago, he was given the opportunity to move forward this. I contacted him the next, the next day on y'all's advisement that, you know, I would have to give him the opportunity to move forward. So, I contacted him the next day. And ten weeks and three days, it took him till last night to, to come up with a proposal to move forward on what he was willing to accept. That's kind of convenient that he sends it the night before the hearing, so he could come in here today if he wasn't incarcerated yesterday in McDuffie County and tonight in Richmond County. In the last three years, Mr. Chastiger has been pled guilty twice to two cancel theft by, I'm not, that's the Georgia term, I'm sorry, in South Carolina. It was a, a sustaining signature and a false pretenses. Wish, I wish Georgia would have this law, because it's a lot easier to prosecute under this law. The two days before the hearing, he was also charged with another account of this. The day, that same day, he was also subpoenaed by another family in South Carolina for the same thing. There's countless other people that I've gone back over fifteen years, eight counties, that I've contacted people where he's been, he's made a professional living as doing enough work to keep it in the civil matter and walking away. I've got estimates on my pool, we did fifteen thousand dollars of work, received thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. That's twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars cash in his pocket. And I would beg to say it's even more than that, because one of his contractors that he hired to do some of the plumbing on my property came looking for him two days after he just disappeared from the, the project, asked him, you're here to finish? He's like, no, I'm here looking for Mr. Chastiger. He's like, I said, well, I haven't seen him, I haven't seen him, you know, in, in months, you know? I said, and about six months at the time, he's only been at my house two weeks, actually been working on this project. He says, well, Mr. Bono, he's, he was, I've done, come down here from Atlanta. He goes, I've worked on seven properties for him. He owes me close to ten thousand dollars, and I have to put a lien on your property to get my money. So, of course, not only through the countless lies that Mr. Chastiger has told me, you know, and the red flags and understanding I'm pretty much going to be out of this money, now I'm faced with paying him twice for the same thing. So, after several conversations, I brought proof to show that, you know, where I've paid Earl, and he says, well, I'll just take it up with Earl, Mr. Bono, and your property. He goes, it wasn't, yours was the least, because all I did was the plumbing here. I said, well, I appreciate that, I really hate that you have to take a loss, but it's really hard for me to take two losses. One of the complaints that Earl said was that I didn't have the monetary means to pay for the pool. That was one of the things, like, we had a big argument, like, he didn't think I had enough money. Well, somebody who doesn't have enough money, doesn't go get cashier's checks in advance for every draw and put them in a drawer and show them, second, here they are. All you need to do is do the work that's required, I've got your money for you. So, if I'm going to try to cheat him out of money, I'm not going to go waste the money and time to buy cashier's checks for the draws. I have a receipt here that shows I currently remain fourteen thousand dollars in an account paid for my pool, which I'm going to continue to do until this board, or until I receive the bond. Then I'm going to use that to try to finish my pool. I also have a receipt from. Yeah, before I waste time.
Mr. Bono, you, you don't have to justify anything before this board. We've made our decision to uphold the Construction Advisory Board decision.
The, well, I would ask.
Part it remains, what will happen with the, the bond proceeds?
The, I would only ask that, you know, the, I understand you're going to give the man fourteen days. I guess he's got his right. I mean, the man's in jail for not paying his insurance and, and tags. Do you really think he has enough money to move forward with my pool? Do you think he has any of that twenty-five thousand dollars cash that's going to move forward my pool?
Mr. Bono, we have to proceed by the, the rules.
The code. I, I get you, maybe we should make a, a change in that. But with that, I do thank the, the board and voting in my favor tonight. I'd really like to move that we help protect the own owners, but maybe raising the bonds here in Columbia County for such projects, raising the inspections include each phase, the plumbing phase, you know, which was done incorrectly.
We'd like to encourage the, the client not to pay anything if the work has not been done. That's one thing we'd like to encourage.
We legally can't raise the bond, it's a technicality, but I can go into it later. Boy, the, the rights we have under the.
There could be, at least grease the inspections. I understand, like, you know, but to me, when you're building a pool, it's not something you do every day. And it's a large upfront cost to the construction, because I, I've worked in construction, so I, I know that the large upfront cost.
If he can't afford the upfront cost, he shouldn't be in business. So, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
We have no legal matters listed. We do have a personnel matter, property matters, Ms. Richardson?
I'm sorry, I had those. I'll make a motion to promote Sarah Beth.
McAvoy.
McAvoy to manager one, non-exempt, grade twenty-five, and an annual salary of forty-four sixteen to be effective November eleventh, two thousand and eighteen.
Second. Any conversation, question, all in favor? Commissioner Allen?
I make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve $99,300 to Furious Ferry Realty LLC, Parcel 4, $9,000 to William B. Pool, Parcel 32, $9,000 Douglas W. Kennedy, Parcel 142, $6,250 to Royce G. and Beth T. Newsome, Parcel 144, $1,400 James L. and Anna L. Kittens, Parcel 150, $14,000 to Roxy and Barney and Bonnie M. Craycraft, Parcel 170, $500 to David B. and Amy L. Hart, Parcel 177, $4,065 to Resource 88 LLC, Parcel 178, and $23,621 to Adrian Todd Weaver and David C. Simmons, Parcel 183, to obtain the right-of-way indoor easements for the SR-28 Furious Ferry Road widening project.
Second. You did pretty good, I know.
Thanks, sir. There's more to come.
You've heard this motion for a lot of property acquisitions or easements, all in
I make a motion to approve $65,100 to Grove Town Hospitality Associates LLC, Parcel 3, $9,118 to Michael Daniel Byrd, Parcel 36 EF, $20,500 to G&amp;W Holdings Group LLC, Parcel 51, $51,200 to Bagabadi Incorporated, Parcel 56, and $66,600 to Lewis Memorial United Methodist Church, Parcel 5962, to obtain right-of-way indoor easements for the Lewiston Road widening project.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Finally and happily, sir, I make a motion to approve $500 to James D. and Karen R. Brazel, Parcel 18A, $500 to Patrick F. Chun Cha Moore, Parcel 25A, $500 Darrell J. Russell, Parcel 29A, $500 to Nicholas J. Gagnon, Parcel 30A, $600 to James L. and Kimberly J. Arnold, Parcel 36A, $2,000 to Emery W. and Lolita Parham Jr., Parcel 58A, $655 Seaborn Jackson, Parcel 59A, and $500 Sharon F. Lanier, Parcel 67A.
Second. And I believe this should.
To obtain right-of-way.
Right-of-ways for Flowing Wells Road?
Yes, sir, for the Flowing Wells Road widening project.
How close are we? Been finished with.
I think that's all of Flowing Wells, isn't it?
It finalizes it. Close the book.
Got a motion, did we have a second?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? We have any comments from the commission? Anything to be added from the staff? Any reason we should continue this meeting?
I do, I do have a comment. Chairman, make a motion.
Second. We ready to vote? Please, all in favor? Cards earned.
You had a comment to make a motion?
He was being sneaked.
That was his comment.
Did I just slide that right in there?